Welcome. Thank you all for taking time out of your busy day to join us. I think I know most of you in here, but for those I haven't had the chance to meet, my name's Bill Root and I have the pleasure of being the president of this great institution we know as the University of Northern Iowa. I would like to welcome members of the Board of Regents. Regent President Bruce Rastetter, Regent UNI alumni and Chair of the Efficiency and Transformation Committee Larry McKibben, Regent Milk Dakhovic right here, and the team from Deloitte Consulting Rick Ferraro and Virginia Frazier. Welcome to the University of Northern Iowa for today's open forum and upcoming interviews. We look forward to working with Rick and Virginia and the rest of the Deloitte team and learning from them about their findings. As you know, Iowa's three public universities are embarking on a historic review of their administrative and academic operations in order to maximize resources, improve efficiencies, and contain rising costs. Our goal is to transform our university into one that is sustainable for the long term and true to our core academic mission of education, research, and service, as well as learning, discovery, and engagement. We are pleased all you could join us today and we hope that this session will be both informative and helpful. We are officially calling this effort Rising to the Next Tier, T-I-E-R, to underscore our commitment to transparency and inclusiveness in the efficiency review. We respect the diverse views of our students, faculty, and staff, as well as the community, both on and off campus, and encourage underscore all of you to share your ideas with us. At UNI, we're always looking for ways to be more efficient, and some of those successful efficiencies include collaborating with Iowa State and the University of Iowa on various software systems and purchasing contracts. Jobs at UNI, a system that streamlines the workflow associated with recruiting faculty and staff was developed in collaboration with the University of Iowa. We're also working with Iowa State and the University of Iowa data centers to secure our off-site data backups. Continuing to reduce general fund support to athletics and reallocating that money to academic areas. A total of $500,000. $125,000 for FY13, $125,000 for FY14, and $250,000 for FY15 will be reallocated from athletics to academic affairs. Since FY09, general fund support to athletics has been reduced by nearly 30 percent. Reducing our footprint by eliminating two buildings and repurposing Bartlett Hall to house faculty. The demolition of Baker Hall will save us $99,000 in annual energy costs. The demolition of Price Lab reduced utility costs by $170,000. The demolition of Baker Hall and the renovation of Bartlett Hall eliminated more than $9.5 million of deferred maintenance for the university. Outsourcing email and consolidating computer servers. We completed the process of outsourcing all faculty, staff, and student email and all university calendar activities to Google. Through this partnership, we're able to provide services at a fraction of the cost we would have incurred if we were to provide these services ourselves. Also, our server virtualization project has reduced costs associated with equipment acquisition, energy consumption, computer room space, and staff time. We currently have 470 virtual servers running on 30 physical servers. Signing a contract with Copyworks to offer copy services to UNI at a 50% discount off retail prices. We also entered into a contract with the University of Iowa Printing Center to handle the printing of all UNI's letterhead, business card, and envelope requests. This collaboration has proven to be very cost-effective and an efficient way to serve the UNI campus community. Breaking away from national trends in student borrowing, UNI has seen its average student loan indebtedness decrease by 10% over the last four years. The average undergraduate student now graduates having borrowed $2,500 less than in 2010. The efficiencies you help identify will create savings that will be reinvested into programs that strengthen teaching and learning, research and intellectual contribution, service and engagement, and improve our administrative processes at all levels, and keep our high-quality public education affordable to Iowa students and their families. The first phase of this comprehensive review will be conducted over the next few months. It will include an examination of all aspects of the three public universities, operational and business functions, programs at all levels, and both facilities and facility planning and usage. Everything is on the table, and all ideas, questions, and input are welcome. And I assure you, as they will, Deloitte will be listening and learning as we participate. As I have committed to many faculty and staff that I have spoken to, I would like to emphasize that no substantive review and examination of academic programs will take place until the beginning of fall semester. Data and information may be collected prior to that time to assist us in the process and progress of the project, but we will make sure we engage the faculty and staff of UNI during the time that they are here on campus to be a full partner in this review. We want to engage and involve as many people as possible in this project. The University of Northern Iowa is proud to be a partner with Iowa State and the University of Iowa on this review. This is a process that will make us all even stronger, and as prudent stewards of public dollars, we have a responsibility to operate as efficiently as possible and ensure that our university thrives long, long into the future. And as for me, you all need to know and you know already, I embrace this opportunity, I embrace the conversation, I embrace the agreements, and I embrace the disagreements. Thank you all for helping us maintain UNI's long tradition of academic excellence. After the introductory presentations, there will be time for questions during the session today. The format for questions today will be as follows. There are cards available that you can write your questions on. Where are those cards, Kelly?
They're outside on tables. If anybody needs cards.
They're outside on the tables. If anybody needs them, we'll bring some in to you. Write down your questions on those cards. Members of our staff will go around to pick them up. And Kelly Flagey, raise your hand, Kelly. Kelly will be reading those questions directed at either the Regents or the Deloitte team. If you are joining us remotely, you can go to our website, our efficiency website, Click on Town Hall Meeting in the upper left-hand side of that site and type your question in under Submit Your Question, and that will come to us at this session. If you wish to join us through Twitter, you can do so at hashtag capital U capital N capital I efficiency. And if we are unable to answer all the questions submitted, we will answer them and post them on the efficiency website, again, www.uni.edu/web/efficiency. At any time during the study, today, tomorrow, or the next day, you are welcome to submit any comments or questions by going to that same efficiency website and click on the Submit Your Comments bar in the upper left-hand corner of the site. I would like to now turn it over to members of the Board of Regents who are leading this review. And to start off, I'm pleased to introduce President of the Board of Regents Bruce Rastetter. Bruce?
Thank you, President Root. I'll try to be brief so we can get to the other members and to get to the questions of the audience, which is the key reason why we're here. I think one of the first things I'd like to talk about a little bit is in terms of the Board of Regents and our initiatives and things that we're doing. It was just a couple of years ago when I became a Regent and President Lang, we encouraged the Regents and the university presidents to talk about the differences between the three universities. And one of the key differences and uniqueness of the University of Northern Iowa is the number of Iowa students that it educates, graduates, and then stays in the state 10 years later. And oftentimes, the Board had continued to talk about the three universities and not allow each university to talk about its uniqueness, the diversity, and the strategic direction that it had. And one of the things that we felt strongly about is that that is something we should embrace, and that is something that we should make sure as we think about that, it creates unique funding challenges for the University of Northern Iowa compared to the other two. And so I think some of the initiatives on the Board, and be happy to take questions later, on the Performance Funding Committee that's going on now that will make a recommendation to the Board in May and that we will vote on in June revolving around funding and the performance funding and identifying that of, and of potentially having Regents appropriation follow in-state students. And we think that that's important. One of the recognitions that we've also had in that regard is asking the state to respond with special funding separate from the other two universities for the University of Northern Iowa with a special $4 million funding. So we think it's important. The last time that the Regents looked at the funding appropriations was 70 years ago. That's clearly too long. And the last time we looked at efficiencies in a massive, large comprehensive study was 30 years ago, and I would suggest that's also too long as well. And I think one of the commitments that we have that you will see is to make sure that we're open, we're transparent, and we're inclusive. And that's the reason today that we're beginning this process here with the Town Hall Meeting. We will continue to have multiple meetings on campus. We want the stakeholders involved, and we want to say at the outset that any savings found will be reinvested in the university that finds the savings. I think the other aspect of the study that we think is important, that it embraced the uniqueness and the unique mission of each university. The reality is, in a state with three large universities, we have limited resources. So one of the comments that I made at the other two meetings, we need to make sure that the three universities don't become look-alike universities in offering the same course offering and duplication and so forth going forward. So we think that's an extremely important aspect of it, and that all aspects of the university be looked at in terms of administration, athletics, as well as academic programs that the universities offer. So we're looking forward to making sure that we listen and, again, are open and transparent. Glad to see a number of you here today and would encourage you as we go about this process to get involved and be involved. I think one of the missions of the Board of Regents is clearly accessibility, affordability, and making sure we improve the quality of education. Those are the three main missions that we have and that we take very seriously about. And I personally reflect that, I think, because I was first generation to go to college just like my four siblings. One brother went to the University of Northern Iowa, graduated as a teacher. Sister went to Allen Nursing School later here and graduated in teaching. I went to the University of Iowa. Younger brother went to the University of Iowa. My pathway was to go to community college, first for two years, live at home, then the University of Iowa in terms of being able to make it affordable. So one of our challenges as we think about student debt, and UNI the last two years has done a good job at reducing that, but clearly our system and the state of Iowa in general has the sixth highest student debt in the country that our students face when they graduate. And long-term, that's just not sustainable. There's two ways that we fund the colleges, is either through state appropriations or increasing tuition. And the challenge is state appropriation cuts that happen is make sure that we articulate to the state why it's important, why they should consider funding the universities in a greater way. I think we'll be successful in that effort again this year. Last year, we received a 2.6% increase, an additional for UNI of the 4 million, the first year, 10 million one-time funding last year, and then with the commitment that we would freeze tuition. This year, we're asking for a 4% increase and additional funding for Northern Iowa because of their uniqueness with the in-state student number, and that we would once again freeze tuition. And with that, and you'll see a chart later in the meeting, that it was not that long ago, I think 15, 20 years ago, in which 70% of the money to fund the universities came from the state and 30% from tuition. Today, that number is reversed. And so one of the things the Board feels good about, at least in the last two years, we've reversed that number by about 6.5%. But long-term, to continue to ask the state for more money, freeze tuition probably isn't sustainable. So we need to make sure that we're operating as efficiently as possible, and that's what the study's about, and that the money go to accessibility, affordability, improving the quality of education, make sure we're true to the missions of each university. So with that, I'll introduce Regent McKibben, who's agreed to chair the committee, and Larry, welcome.
Mr. President, he says I agreed to chair this committee. I did agree to it, but I think I was not given a lot of option to disagree with it. But thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to point out Kelly Flagey here today. Kelly has been on our committee. She has represented UNI. I have come to know her, and she has done a fantastic job, so thank you, Kelly, for what you've done here. I'd also like to recognize the dean of now my college. I'm on the CSBS advisory committee. I think I saw Dean Bass here a little bit ago and got a chance to visit with her. Well, there she is, right there with her purple on. Thank you, Dean Bass, for coming today. And I'd like to thank the student leaders here. We've had breakfast meetings for the last six months in which I've told every university student leader group, we need you as a part of this. We need you to be tuned in, and we think it's the most important thing that you could do in the next year of your term in service. And President-elect, I will catch time with you after we get done here. So where do I start? Well, I think I'm going to start with what I thought of coming up from Marshalltown today. I'm home. I've got on my purple tie. I have on my lapel pin from UNI, and I am a proud graduate of this university. It has done so much for me. Thank you for coming today. You in the audience and those that are watching us live stream, you're where we start. We're starting right there. The student leaders, we're starting right there. Dean Bass and the deans and the faculty people. The staff at this university that I met with when I was going through orientation this summer, staff came up to me and said, "We'll get on the team, Larry. Just don't give it to us top-down." And my response to that was, "It ain't coming top-down. It's not coming top-down, it's coming bottom-up, and we are committed to that, and you heard the president say that." The other reason that this university means so much to me is that watching at home and telling me to keep it short, Larry, is my bride, who I met here at the University of Northern Iowa at a toga party. Believe it or not, you know, it's amazing. Only 10 years ago, I was here to toga. No, it's... It was longer than 10 years ago. My son graduated from here. My daughter-in-law graduated from here. My daughter went to school here, ended up graduating at the University of Iowa. My brother-in-law graduated from here. My sister-in-law graduated from here. I'll stop there, but we have roots in this community. And I have roots in all of the universities. I went to Marshalltown Community College to start because my father was buying a farm. And my mother worked night-duty nurse just to put us through school, and they did not have money to help. So I worked my way through. I went to Marshalltown Community College. I worked every summer to come up here. I went to Iowa State University as a teaching assistant. Went to the University of Iowa to graduate from law school. I had the opportunity to dream the American dream. Better I don't talk about that. I had that opportunity, and it means a lot to me. And I have said it some of the other presentations, and amazingly, this morning in the Marshalltown Times Republican, April 7th, you will not be able to see this, but I will read it to you because we talk about students in our community. This is Jessica Buenostro. Her parents are Juan Manuel Benostro and Monica Gonzalez. She's a 10-year-old. She goes to Woodbury School. She wants to live. She loves to read, and she wants to go on to school, and she says that in this story this morning. I don't know how it happened to be there when I was going to be in front of you today. That's why I'm out of the office today. That's why I'm devoting the time that it takes to make this successful, and that's why I am committed over the next years to come to make this a project that is transformative to Iowa, is transformative to the Regents, that brings us all together under one umbrella. We can have our battles on the football field or the basketball court, but let's get together, let's join the universities, let's make ours a collaborative effort in the state of Iowa. And the last thing I want to read to you was an op-ed piece, an editorial piece that was in one of the university newspapers, and it says, and I quote this part, "The various universities of Iowa were created to provide our state with well-qualified and well-taught citizens. When the cost of that education rises, more individuals are either not given the chance to attend in our state's region schools or are forced to shackle themselves to mountains of student debt. That, friends and neighbors, is unacceptable in Iowa. That is not what our forefathers planned, and that is not what needs to happen." And the other thing I had, I had my secretary at the office this morning in our real estate department run a financial amortization schedule. And UNI, by the way, is the lowest average student debt of all three Regents universities in the state of Iowa. $25,000 paying, starting June 1 of this year, 6% interest, some may be lower, some may be higher, paying $350 a month. 89 payments, seven and a half years, and those are the payments that could go to a house, an apartment, a new car, you name it. That is not good for our economy in the state, and we can do better, and we can do better by repurposing the funds at these universities and having you tell us how we ought to repurpose them in an efficient manner, and we can have a win-win situation. So with that, I'd like to... We went through a great consulting process, and I think we have a great consulting team. Rick Ferraro leads that team. Rick is the director. I'd like to introduce the Deloitte team and give them a UNI welcome.
Thank you, Larry. Thank you, President Root, for the pin I got this morning. It's a pleasure to be here, and thank you all for coming and taking time during the day. We know you're interested. We really want your ideas. So in meetings, I mean, we're going to meet with hundreds of people, we want your views. We want you to post questions and ideas on the website. We want to have this be as inclusive as possible. And also, just to be clear, people probably are wondering, so what's your agenda? What are you guys trying to do? And the answer is, we don't have an agenda. We're just supposed to find opportunities for improving efficiency. We don't know where those answers are because we don't know you yet, so we can't possibly guess at what that would be, and that's why we're spending the time this week just starting the relationship and the information flow about how it is that you operate. So another quick question, I'm preempting some of these questions. In the interviews today, in the interviews this week, all we really want to learn is how you operate and why you run the way you do. That's really all we need to walk away with and understand where the dollars are so we just have an idea of scale, but that's fundamentally what we need to get today or this week. So there's a couple of slides and so forth, but just a little bit about myself. I'm a product of public higher education with a master's degree from State University of New York at Buffalo. I have six siblings who have advanced degrees. My father did not have a college degree. You're not going to find anyone who's a bigger proponent of graduate work, research, instruction, and higher education because my family lived it. My job today, or my job in this engagement, is to broker the talents and skills that reside within Deloitte, and Deloitte is a multifaceted firm, global firm, one of the largest professional services firms in the world, to bring those skills to bear to anywhere in this project that's relevant. So I have a network of internal folks that I can contact with, and we have about 15 people or so on the ground conducting interviews, but they are going to be tapping easily over 100 experts within the firm, elsewhere within the firm, to get background, to get ideas, to get comparative information about how to compare you to other systems and universities. And that whole process is a pretty complex one, partly because universities are a very complex organization. Now, today, I'm going to talk a little bit about what's going on in the environment and what's happening in the industry, and then we'll talk a little bit more about what we're going to do. But if you look at the numbers that were... If you look at the industry, it's a very vibrant thing going on, but... See if I can get this to work. This is not advancing. There we go. Sorry, I have to lean over. But this is the scissors diagram. You've heard a mention of this. In this case, the scissors is more open and the slope is a little steeper than some other scissor diagrams, but this is what Regent Rastetter was referring to about the change in mix of tuition versus state appropriations. And this is not atypical. This is happening industry-wide if you think of higher education as an industry, and this is a challenge as you deal with how to advance as an institution and as a system for Iowans. Where do you fund your way to get better and be competitive? Because there are other systems out there just waiting to get your students. Okay? So it's going to be a more competitive environment in higher education for the next five to 10 years. There are fewer 18-year-olds entering enrollment. The applicant pool is shrinking. In addition, we have what would be a... Just think of an industry that has pricing power or not pricing power. This is now a period where higher education is losing its pricing power. It can't raise its prices, its tuition, much more. There's starting to be pushback. They're starting to, you know, people think of alternatives. This is an indication that the industry is in a challenging position. It's not in a strong position relative to its customers, the students. It's in a challenged position relative to its students. Students are going to exert more and more choice, and it's going to make it more challenging for higher educational institutions. I'd like to talk just a little bit about a few trends. So we could spend, you know, a week talking about trends in higher education, but, you know, clearly, you know, when I talk to my colleagues within the firm, many who work in various other industries, when I describe what's happening in higher ed, they have to step back and usually respond by saying, "Wow, I didn't know it was that complex. It was that... So many things are going on all at once," right? That's the reaction that I get. Now, contrast that to, you know, the example I used, and maybe people wouldn't love that example, but, you know, oil and gas, extracting oil and gas is an industry. You dig a hole, you put a pipe down it, you get some fluid out, you refine it, and you sell it, right? That's a fairly simple process from beginning to end, okay? Whereas, look at a university with 100 programs in 100 different fields of intellectual endeavor, okay, with research, with instruction. It's a far more complex world. Excuse me. Just getting over cold. So this, you know, what's going on here with MOOCs, with a variety of choices and so forth, we have, you know, resistance for pricing and so forth. We have a lot of technology choices, how to flip the classroom, is that a right? Does that fit learning styles? There's just a lot of choices. And so the question is, so how do we compete compared to other higher educational choices to the benefit of Iowans and the students and the taxpayers so that we get better in Iowa? And how do you fund that? So that becomes... And then in the face of the scissors diagram with state appropriations going down, the challenge is then, how do you find a source of funding for those efforts? And a lot of companies in the recession have learned that, you know, they need to reallocate what, how they spend their effort and their resources and so forth, which Regent McKibben was describing about repurposing efforts, okay? So if we're at one tier of performance, you know, I was overused the acronym a little bit, but we want to move to the next tier of performance. And to move to that next tier of performance because the others are going to be doing it, how do you do it? Do you have to repurpose your efforts and find out a way to do it, do it better, do it different? And we're anticipating, as we heard the list that President Root talked about, that you've clearly had many efforts, and we know some were rare. you've clearly had many efforts, and we know some were very painful in the last couple of years, and, you know, most organizations have those kinds of experiences. So think of our charge. Our charge is to come in and understand where it is on that continuum of, and what you've experienced, and what changes you have made, and the adjustments you've made over the years, and then understand it enough to compare it to best practices outside, and to identify opportunities to move to the next tier of performance. And the only way we can do that is with input from you. We can't figure that out on our own. So we're absolutely dependent on the input we get from everyone at this university. So with that, let me just talk a little bit about the, oh, and one other thing, there's been mention of the audit, so I just want to cast a little light on that term, so people interpret it, because I heard one comment was, well, isn't our audit committee of the board going to be overseeing that? And I just want to just articulate the difference between a financial audit that you hear about auditing firms doing, and Deloitte has four businesses, only one is the audit business, and what they do is they say, well, we checked all your receipts and all your computer reports, and we went out and actually found the data that backs it up, and we have an audit trail that we followed and can prove, and will sign and attest, that the numbers you show on your financial report at the end of the year are actually accurate because we checked. That's what an audit is. It's not what this project is about, okay? An audit is looking at last year's financial performance and saying, the numbers they said were right. It's a look out the rearview mirror. The whole team we have here on this engagement is from our consulting arm. And in that sense, what we do is we help clients address their most difficult challenges as an organization, and help them navigate and gain the confidence to move forward to address those challenges. So this, in that sense, is a very forward-looking exercise. We need to understand, and that's what this first couple of weeks is about, is understanding where you are in the journey, and then deciding, okay, well, what are the next steps? From moving one tier to the next, what are the next steps to get to the next tier? That's the challenge, okay? So this is Deloitte Consulting that's working on this engagement, not Deloitte Audit. So when we think about all that, you know, the current status quo really isn't sustainable. We run the risk of having, basically being run over by potential competitors, think of it that way, okay? And you don't want to be left behind. So that's really the intent, the long-term intent of this exercise. And so in the short term, what are we going to do between now and the end of May? We're going to understand you, we're going to compare you to other practices in performance, we're going to identify ways that you could potentially do something better, and we're going to take a wild guess, an informed but wild guess, as to whether that would be worth a lot. Small versus big, imagine. We're not going to be able to calculate anything down to very specific numbers, because we won't have had the information. The idea, then, is to share with the board and with the faculty leadership, and we are going to follow the principles of shared governance through this process, what those ideas are. And then the question is, well, where is it worth investing further effort to analyze those opportunities? Which ones are worth investigating, which ones are worth putting aside for now? That's the decision that gets made. That's not our decision. Deloitte is just providing the list of opportunities, so you have awareness, shine the light in corners, illuminate facts, put facts to where there's a lot of, maybe, discussion that goes both ways, that, you know, is a little unclear, maybe make a little more, get some clarity out of that by developing the facts. So we're going to be very fact-driven, but that is what we're doing by the end of May, and nothing more, okay? So we'll have some interviews, we'll have some discussions, get some, the data requests. By the way, thank you, everybody, for submitting the data requests. Hopefully it wasn't too painful. We know these exercises are disruptive, there's no denying it, but thank you for your help on that, we really do appreciate it. It helps us do our job better, and helps you get a better solution that fits you and fits the state. So, moving forward, the idea is to move to that next tier, and we all have a responsibility in doing that. Just make sure I'm on the right page. So the main objectives here are to identify creative new ideas for investing public resources so that we can uphold the tradition of longstanding academic excellence. We also recognize that each institution has a unique purpose, and can be differentiated from one another, and there are strengths of each that absolutely need to be preserved or actually strengthened. And then there are other areas where the question, where there's some, there would likely be some questions. We have no idea, but there would likely be some questions. Is this the right balance for the state as a whole? And hopefully those would come forward, and hopefully it would be informed by information from all of you and your colleagues. We're going to be looking at both administrative and academic programs, and to look at both the effectiveness, as well as the efficiency and cost-effectiveness of those operations. And again, this is informed by you. We would expect that the implications of this effort would help refine the way you go forward in strategic planning, because it will probably refine focuses, priorities, relative differences between the institutions, and more clarity on resource needs to move to the next level. We're hoping that that all emerges out of this effort. So Virginia is going to talk a little bit in a second about how we're going to do this work, but last, I just want to reinforce that the way I've heard it described by other universities is the finder's keeper's rule, I call it. If you find savings, you keep it within your area. That's the idea. Virginia?
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you so much for coming out today and taking time away from your daily work to be a part of this session. Thank you, President Rude, for having us here today, President Rasdeder, Regent McKibben. It's a pleasure to be here, and I'm going to talk a little bit about the work that we're going to do on a day-to-day basis, and how we're actually going to go about the process of getting this work done. I'm going to keep my remarks short. I think we've covered a few of these topics already, and I want to make sure that we spend the majority of the time answering your questions and getting into some dialogue and discussion with you. So let me go ahead to the next slide. We've talked about the process that we're going to be performing as being open and transparent and inclusive, and those are extremely important principles to the board, they're extremely important to us. This town hall that we're conducting today represents the very beginning effort to start that process. We're at phase one of what is likely to be a long process of looking at opportunities, and then narrowing those opportunities and looking at possibilities for implementation. So we're just at the beginning. And one thing that I've noticed so far, we were at the University of Iowa last week, we had a tremendous visit there. It was really incredible to see the campus and hear about the passion that faculty, staff, and students have for their institution. It was really very eye-opening and inspired our team to get to know each university even better. It was something that I expect will happen this week here at University of Northern Iowa as well, so we're looking forward to interacting and engaging with the community throughout. We also are planning many different ways to be able to get your input, and we're going to talk about that in one of the next slides, because as you've heard today already, we know that the folks in this room and the folks around campus are the people who know this university the best. I can only imagine the number of combined years of experience in this room and beyond. That collective wisdom is exactly what we want to tap into, to understand the challenges that you face as a university, and understand some of the possibilities out there. I want to give you just a little sense of my background, too, so you have an idea of where I'm coming from as far as perspective goes. I am the program manager for the project. I've worked with a number of higher education institutions in the U.S. And before I came to Deloitte, I worked at Carnegie Mellon University in Pittsburgh for seven years. So I was a research associate, I ran a research project at that institution, loved my time at Carnegie Mellon. And prior to that, I grew up in a college town. My parents were both professors. My father was a professor of education, my mother was a professor of nursing. I have a brother who's a teacher. So education is really at the, is in my heart and soul, I feel very passionate about it. I can't think of another institution in our society that has as much value and impact, and to be a part of helping create that type of future in Iowa is very, very exciting, and to continue the long traditions of excellence that you already have here. Let me move to the next slide. So as we talked about the town halls, and I think Rick mentioned the interviews that we're going to be conducting on campus this week, we're going to be meeting with faculty, staff, students, administrators, we're engaging with groups and with individuals. We've already had a number of comments and questions and ideas come in online, and we're collecting those from Kelly. In fact, I think across the three universities, we've had something like 200 comments come in through the website, which has been fantastic, it's tremendous. It gives us a lot to think about and mull over, and even get into a little bit further in some of our interviewing. As time goes on, and as we narrow the focus of these potential opportunities and start to really understand what some of the possibilities are, that's when we're going to engage through other means as well. So we're going to continue with the meetings, we're going to continue with the website, and the emails, and updates that way. We're also looking for as many opportunities as possible for two-way dialogue and conversation. So whether that's having working groups later on, where we get a little bit deeper into a particular opportunity area that holds promise, and understand some of the complexities even further, and helps to perhaps design some ways to overcome those complexities and look for ways to move forward. So we also have been going through a number of different ideas, whether electronic or in-person, different mediums we can use to connect with you. So that's one thing, too, coming out of today's forum, if you have ideas of the best way to stay in touch, we certainly welcome those. We're trying to cover as many avenues and channels as possible, but I'm sure there are more that we should also consider. Finally, I want to give you an overview of the phases of this project, and I think Rick talked about them a little bit earlier, but to say it again, we are at the very, very beginning of this project. We're at the beginning of the first phase, phase one. This is where we're collecting information, we're doing analysis, we're starting to identify some potential improvement opportunities, and it's a part of an important process, and it's not the end of the process. In fact, to the contrary, when we move into the other phases of the process, that's where we'll have even further opportunities for engagement. So as we move into phase two, and we know that as we move into, as we wrap up phase one at the end of May, and as we start to do our planning for phase two, we know how critical it's going to be, as President Rude said, to wait until we have the faculty members that we need to interact with back on campus, and able to talk through in detail academic program ideas, and that's an important part of the way that our schedule is going to be structured. We also know that there are areas of the program that we continue on throughout the summer months, especially in the administrative area, where there may be some ways that we can look for ideas for collaborative purchasing, and building on some of the collaboration you have with other schools already. Helping to also identify ways to simplify complex processes, or look for ways to help to obtain efficiencies in other ways. So those are things that we can continue, we're going to work closely with the board so that we can plan that schedule, so we have the right amount of participation. And then finally, as we move, and as the board decides whether or not to move into an implementation phase, and who they're going to partner with for that phase, there is a phase-three potential for actually implementing some of the opportunities that are identified, which of course would mean a lot of engagement with the campus community along the way. So that gives you an idea of what the phases in this project look like, and where we are in the process. Hopefully this illuminates, again, that we're at the very beginning, this is going to be an iterative process, it's not necessarily linear. There's going to be an important phase and stages and part of this project that involves a dialogue and discussion and mulling over of ideas to make sure that we have the right amount of analysis and engagement before moving forward. So I'm going to now turn things over to Kelly as we start to take your questions and answers. This is the part that we're excited about and waiting for. So I'm going to open it up, and if you have your cards, I think Kelly's going to give you some more instruction on how to send those over. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Virginia and everyone. If you have written a question down on your card, if you just either want to hold that up, or if you want to pass it to the center aisle, we've got people who will pick them up, and we're going to try to get through as many questions as absolutely possible today. We have about another, not quite, a little bit more than 40 minutes left, and so we will go through the questions, I've received some already. I'm going to try to put them in an order that's a little mixed up, so we can field some directly to our Regents and some to our consultants as well, so that we're not feeding all of them a bunch of questions all at once. So, the first question that I'd like to start with, actually, I'm going to address to Rick and Virginia. And typically, when we think about efficiencies, we're thinking about cost-cutting opportunities and ways to save money. What role do revenue operations that we already have on campus play in this process?
They're very relevant. You know, I think the opportunity to simply raise revenue and address the whole issue is probably not going to be sufficient, but that's clearly an option and something that we're going to be asking for suggestions about. So thank you for your ideas on that in advance, but we're also going to be asking about other areas that, for example, how you do something, and maybe there's ways to simplify how that is done. And the way that may manifest itself is not that there's an immediate cut, let's say, but that you can grow enrollment, you can grow workload without having to add staff. And that is, in the end, an efficiency improvement over time, so I think that there's a significant component about how we think about this. If, you have taken some significant cuts. Cuts are, I think about it and I do it. That's not the business we're in. We're in, can you eliminate the work? Can you change the way work is done? Can you import better practice? Can you do it in a way that allows you to grow your output without having to add to your input side of the resources going into it, which in effect is an efficiency improvement?
Great, thank you. This one I'm addressing to you, Bruce. Rick went through the process that we'll be using as far as gathering data through this phase one. Could you walk us through a little bit of how you see the decisions being made, or those recommendations being enacted?
I think, you know, our perspective would be very similar to what we're doing today. That once there are those recommendations and those opportunities come forward, that'll, they will become public. We will ask for public input and comment, we'll have transparency on those, there will be a timeframe ahead of the board considering those decisions, in which people can comment and ask any questions, ahead of the board making any decision on that.
Kelly, I might add one thing. In the area of transparency, one of the things that all corners of the state of Iowa sometimes don't feel connected to you and I and Iowa and Iowa State, we're kind of down here in a triangle. Bruce and I have made a strong effort to get our op-ed pieces in the Sioux City Journal and in Dubuque Herald, and we are communicating with all Iowans. And one of the things in terms of how we enact the recommendations, the recommendations that come out will be public and transparent to all Iowans. And so it's my sense that we will have pressure from all Iowans to enact some things that make common sense, and the things that we have picked up from you and that we've learned.
So then, from your comments, is it safe to say that the recommendations necessarily as presented by Deloitte may not necessarily be the way in which they are implemented, and that not necessarily every recommendation would be implemented?
That's correct. We will then go to another process when we're into phase three or moving We will then go to another process when we're into Phase Three or moving into Phase Three, as I talked about here. We will have dialogue inside the Regents. We will have dialogue with the, again, with the universities, and we will have dialogue with all Iowans as we move forward. We don't come with any preconceived notions here. I'm a lifetime learner. I think everybody in this room is a lifetime learner, and we're going to learn from this experience, and we're going to work to get consensus to those changes that are good for the global picture of all of our Regents' universities.
Kelly, if I could add, we believe that it is our job to provide options to our clients so that they can choose what's fitting with their priorities. And the more we do that, the more control the client has, the more ability they have to control their destiny, and it usually is a better solution, right? So, our job is to identify a list of opportunities and convey that to provide that choice.
Great, thank you. This is a question for Rick and Virginia. If review of academic programs doesn't start until the fall, as was indicated earlier by President Rude, are you meeting this week, are your meetings this week only aimed at identifying administrative, purchasing, and et cetera, other efficiencies?
I would say that this week, we are connecting with academic leadership, faculty leaders and deans to start the understanding of how it is that you operate and solicit input as to ideas, as well as pain points and effectiveness opportunities so that we can have a better sense. We're just beginning the process. We recognize that due to the academic calendar, we need to kind of adjust the timing a little bit to have availability and access to faculty, and that's why we'll do a slowdown through the summer.
Great. Let me see, my next question, I know we've got some students in the crowd today. Can you address, this would go back to Rick and Virginia, how you will be sure decreasing course sections will not decrease my learning? Research indicates smaller classes are correlated with higher levels of learning.
That's absolutely right. Citation of the literature. We really don't know whether there's going to be, you know, whether, there is no simple solution which saying increased class size. It's not as simple as that. For example, there are going to be programs that are absolutely central to the mission of this university, and there's going to be other programs that are less so. And we're going to be asking you to relative, on a relative basis, prioritize those as input for us. And there's obviously going to be some programs that absolutely cover their cost. There's going to be other programs that could never possibly do so, and that's okay. The idea is to make the right allocation of resources across that mix and understand that mix, and that's the process we're starting this week.
Great, thank you. This is a question for the Regents. Is there a target amount of money to save at each university?
There is not. I mean, typically, what we heard consistently from the 12 different groups that we interviewed for the job was that nationally, when they do these things, there's anywhere from six to 10 times savings. And today, if you think about our system, it's a $5 billion a year system. 78,000 students, 46,000 employees, 26,000 full-time employees, and I would guess our system in total is pretty reflective of nationally of similar savings that have been found. I think one of the consistent messages we heard from the different groups that we interviewed is clearly one of the times to do this is when you're not facing severe cuts. We're actually in a period of increasing state support in the last two years, and it's important to the long-term sustainability of the system to do it when you have that rather than making the cuts and taking those dollars away from the universities. We're doing the efficiency study with the commitment that those dollars will stay at each specific institution, and I think that's really important. And, but that would be the general range. We don't have any preconceived ideas on it. I think as Rick has mentioned, to look at a variety of things, have those come forward and recommendations from the bottom up in terms of where it makes sense.
I might add just briefly to that, having served 12 years in the Iowa Senate, constantly, year in and year out, we would go to caucus or we'd be on the floor of the Senate, and we'd hear while you're doing, you know, our universities are duplicating this and this and that and the other thing. This is just legislative dialogue that goes on. What are they doing to save costs over there? Well, what we're doing, and I think, and I thank Regent Reseder for leading this, we're telling the legislature, we need support for UNI, we need some more support for our universities. We came through 9/11 in which we had across-the-board cuts that we had to implement in the middle of a year. You talk about an unbelievably bad experience. That was it for a legislator, and I know that was it for the leadership team at this university. We're blessed with the revenues in the state, but we still have, you all read the paper just like I do, and you know that the questions are down there. What are you doing? How are you going to meet, how are you going to meet the legislature halfway in terms of, let's all grow this thing together and let's put the money where it needs to be together? And I think, and that's the reason I am so committed, and hopefully, the group that I'm looking at here is going to participate with us, because I think we can make this a win-win situation. When we go back to the legislature and we go back to the governor, this year, we want tuition held down for the students, and it's going to be a tougher job for us next year. We go back and say, we're doing our part, and we're doing our, we're working to do the efficiency and repurpose the money at our universities where it'll give us the most bang for the buck. If we do those things, then we go back with a great commitment when we go back and say, and we're down there lobbying for more money, we go back and have a better opportunity of getting it.
Thank you. Rick and Virginia, what programs or departments have you recommended to be closed and/or combined at other schools? And then, what schools?
I don't recall.
That's fair.
It's not as simple as that. It just is never that simple. So, I can't think, I can't think of an example that's as clean as you just described. It never is that simple.
I think one of the comments I would make, that I think one of the challenges we have as a board is, typically, every other meeting, we approve 80 programs, we eliminate 40. We approve 60, we eliminate 20. I'm not so sure from a board standpoint, we have a policy in place that gives us a better understanding, more intelligent understanding of how we're making decisions going forward. So, one of the areas in that realm regarding future duplication between the three universities, what we've asked Deloitte to do is come up with a policy for the board that would parameters around that. So, when we approve programs or we eliminate programs, we have a set of policies that are much more consistent that guide us through that rather than just the recommendations from the three universities. And I think with that, then, our concern back to, and I alluded to it earlier in the comments, is that the challenge with limited resources, making sure that we don't have three look-alike universities. There's things that each university does really well that we ought to make sure we fund as well as we can and that we focus on that. So, I think part of the effort that we're asking them to do is come up with a policy longer term that gives better governance to the system. Doesn't mean that if it's outside the parameter, it may not still be approved and so forth, but at least it gives us much better guidance than I think than what previous boards have had in the past.
So, Bruce, can I ask you to expound on that a little bit based on another question that we've received that talks about past recommendations relative to duplication of programs? As we've already acknowledged and discussed today, you and I recently cut a number of undergraduate majors, minors, and graduate programs. How do you anticipate, or how do you see this situation relative to you and I when there's a feeling that the other institutions have not faced similar cuts?
Yeah, that was one of the very questions we asked two years ago when the challenges came here on the decision on the 82 courses and programs. And what we received from the other two universities is a historic list on programs that they had cut as well and courses during that timeframe. And it clearly arose to us as a board and me in looking at it that we need a much more go-forward ability to understand that. And also, ability to understand if you had a program at Iowa State, is it duplicating a program that exists at Northern Iowa? And then, the specific question, why are we doing that? And so, yeah, I would acknowledge, I think we need a better system going forward, which should be resolved of what we're trying to do here.
Kelly, can I add just one thing?
Absolutely.
When I would, and I forgot to, I think, did I recognize you, Regent Dokovich was recognized here, he's on my committee also. When I, when we were, Milton and I were going through orientation at Iowa State, we met with President Leith over there. President Leith said, I get, I am getting pressure from the insurance companies in Des Moines to have a broader actuarial program at Iowa State University. He said, and I was so impressed by this, he said, I have visited with President Rude. We have talked about the program that you have, that exists at UNI. We have talked about how can we have Iowa State students join that program at UNI? I was just sat there, I was just amazed. I said, what a great conversation to two new leaders at our universities to actually be collaborating and talking about how we can do a program better and more efficiently. And those are the kinds of things that we as Regents, we want to promote that. We want to promote that kind of relationship. And thank you, President Rude, and Bruce has led that.
And I think it's great that, and I think there's a variety of those things that happen informally. We just want to make sure that they're formal, and we want to make sure that those things happen and that we just not wake up and have multiple programs that are funded and then the challenge is funding each of those to the best that we can.
Great, thank you. Okay, Rick and Virginia, here's another one, and it's a multi-part, so I'll give you the first one and then I'll follow up. What do you mean by efficiency? In other words, what variables do you measure?
So, efficiency is a general concept, and I would say that we don't view it as a formula. But the idea is that you either get more out of the way, the resources put into the effort, and you can do that by changing the process, you can do that by changing the policy, you can do that by changing organization structure, you can do that by changing technology, you can do that by changing the way you purchase goods and services. Those all factor into overall efficiency. And if you wanted to, you know, is there a magic number? Is it total dollars per student? I don't think it's as simple as that. But the one word that the Regents chose to put around all this is efficiency. So, hopefully, you get the idea that it is the efficient use of resources to minimize waste, but also to be effective. And there is a trade-off between efficiency and effectiveness, and I think there's only an acceptable lowering of effectiveness that could possibly be tolerated in this kind of effort, particularly if you're talking about academic side, but perhaps in some service levels of administrative things, you might be willing to accept it if you realize that what the trade-off were, if it was pointed out. So, it's no, sorry, no direct, straight, clean answer, but hopefully, you get the sense of what the intent is.
Are there specific statistical analyses that you use?
We're going to do lots of statistical analyses, and it could be comparison of benchmark numbers, and quite frankly, there's probably going to be 100 different, call them key indicator numbers of ratios, and they could be productivity-related, they could be effectiveness-related, they could be unit cost-related, cost per transaction, cost per whatever, right? Generally, it's in those three kind of arenas, and the idea is, first of all, to compare the three universities on some of those indicators, to understand the differences and reinforce some of the differences that have been pointed out to us, and then see, does that make sense? So, there's that element to it. There's the other element of comparing it to outside practices, and some of it will be against other universities and some of it will be against other, just other organizations in general. For example, I'll just use an example, like running a payroll can be very generic and very similar between any organization, so some of those numbers, particularly back-office arena, can be quite comparable and relevant, actually, and can be quite instructive because they show the impact of what practices you deploy and what the impact is on some of those key indicators. So, it's not a statistical, we're not going to do longitudinal studies and look at, you know, chi-squared numbers, but we're, will be fact-based and comparative and trend-oriented through the analysis.
Great, thank you. Can you give a little background, and this is probably directed to both Deloitte as well as the Regents, when the contract with the Board of Regents began specifically with Deloitte? Larry, do you want to take that one?
I'll take that as chair of the committee, probably falls on my bailiwick. We started this process last fall. The Regents discussed it, that was a Regents' decision to move forward with it, and again, everything that we do is online, all of our communications and everything that we have done relative to this process, you can go back and search and pull up. We started last fall, we put an RFP together. The request for proposal was answered by 10 formal applications in January. The Regents Committee, of which Kelly, Regents' representatives from each school are involved, plus our committee, went over those. We interviewed four organizations, tremendous academic organizations and efficiency and transformation organizations in education. Very difficult. We went back in February, we interviewed those, made our final decision. We had bid process, it was a competitive bid process, but we, and interestingly enough, in the final two of our, of the candidates that we were selecting from, the bids were very, very close, so that it made it, from the standpoint of bid process, it made it effective for us to pick either one of them, and we picked the group with Deloitte that we felt had the broadest national and international experience in this area and would give us the most academic assistance. And by the way, they, I will bring up one other thing. You know, they bring in buildings and grounds. Regent Dokovich chairs Buildings and Grounds. We have tremendous expenses for buildings and grounds at our university, and Bruce can talk a little bit about expenses that we have built in. He knows the numbers better than I do, but that'll be part of it, and we haven't talked about that today. Classroom use, maximizing the use of our facilities. What kinds of facilities are we going to build that are going to be good for the next 50 years? I went to school in Saban Hall here. I can guarantee you Saban Hall doesn't look like it did when I went to school there. It's a phenomenal facility. How can we, how can we use our existing facilities? How can we stay as green as possible without tearing down buildings and doing those kind of things? So, that's part of this mission, and we have a great consultant that Deloitte has brought us from Kansas City that's going to work on that part of it too. Bruce, you know the numbers better than I do.
Yeah, I think, I think one of the, one of the challenges we have with the board and previous boards have had is, is the whole capacity utilization of our buildings. The Regents' system has right at $15 billion worth of buildings, but as importantly, it has a half a billion dollars' worth of deferred maintenance. And at some point, and there's a variety of very nice buildings on campus like this building, but there are a variety that are not, and when you go to all three campuses. So, that $500 million of deferred maintenance is a number we're going to have to deal with at some point. It is critically a number that last year, when we had a challenge of articulating the three buildings that we made the request for, the pharmacy building at Iowa, that's the oldest building on campus, the bioscience building at Iowa State that is critically needed because we're running labs at Iowa State from 7:00 in the morning till 10:00 at night, and then the remodel of Schindler Hall became a challenge on what are you going to do about your half billion dollars of deferred maintenance and what is the long-term building plan for the Regents' system to be able to deal with that and articulate that on what it does to state debt? And in addition to that, the universities at various times have done capacity utilization to understand the use of the buildings and those aspects. That'll be part of this study that I think will do a variety of things, both on each campus and also longer term on what the appropriate plan would be on longer-term building on the three campuses that we really need.
Great. So, we've seen, and it's been published, that $2.5 million is the cost of this contract as identified now. Can you talk about what potential costs are going forward or when that $2.5 million is expended?
That $2.5, probably be faster than we want it to be. That $2.5 million will be expended during the next six to 12 months through Phases One and Two. As was indicated, we did not contract for Phase Three. That will be open to discussion again as we, as the Regents goes through the... That will be open to discussion again as we, as the regents goes through the process and the information that we've been given by Deloitte. We will open that process again, depending upon how broad we want to move the next step. And perhaps we'll have Rick tell us a little bit about if they were involved, and I'm sure, and I know they have been at other universities in a phase three, then what would be the timeline for that?
So just a comment about the ultimate cost and so forth. A lot of it depends on what you find and what that list looks like. Because if the list is long and the list is complicated and the list involves a lot of investment to save money, right? Because sometimes, you know, just think about it, it's, sometimes it's very, very worth it to spend a million dollars to go save a million dollars a year, every year thereafter, because your payback is 12 months. Lot of businesses run on paybacks that go out multiple years. So it's a very good investment to actually make, and to do the change right, to do it in a way that's resourced so that it will be, that the, the new way of doing work actually sticks and stays, right? So that you do, you can grow volume without adding more people, as an example, right? So those kinds of investments can, can make these programs pretty expensive. And if, you know, so, and part of it depends on your capacity to afford that, can dictate what you choose to go forward with. And most of those changes are the real meaningful ones. And the reason why they haven't been done is it might have been tough to make the justification for the expenditure of those things to make those changes. And so, and think about it, that it's not, it could be a process change, it could be a, an IT, a systems change, it could be the operating model of an organization, how do you, how do you run this organization to fulfill its mission? Those are complicated changes that are, you just can't do overnight. They may take more than a year to implement. So in all likelihood, we're gonna give a portfolio of opportunities at the end of this project. And in that portfolio will be some of those things which cost a couple million dollars to implement, but would save a couple million dollars a year thereafter on a continual basis, an absolutely worthwhile investment to make. And the other end of the, the portfolio will be things like, make this little tweak and three months later, you're saving money. Right? Renegotiate the contract for X so that you're all saying, paying the same price, because you buy it three different ways at three different prices across the system. Go to the, go to the vendors and negotiate a new price, takes a little while to negotiate that, you sign a new contract, the next month, your prices go down, nice deal. So the, the ideas are, the list of opportunities is gonna be that whole spectrum in that, and that's why the choice gets tough, the burden we put on, on these guys, if you will, to have to sort through that with, in consultation with, you know, university leadership, you know, will, will be an important process to go through because the choices aren't instantly, easily chosen, you actually have to think about it a little bit to make sure what you're doing fits the priorities and missions of each university and the timing of their challenges and their opportunities as they proceed with their strategic plans and how to make those be integrated, right? So that's the challenge. And it isn't just a list that says, okay, we approve the list, check, 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 go implement. It's, 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 some, some will be a little bit in that category, most won't. Why? Because you've taken all the easy ones, you've done the check, 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 we can take a little bit of here, we can take a little bit of there, and you've done all that, and that's what we recognize. So these are gonna be more systemic, more integrated challenges and opportunities that will require some more of that investment.
Great. So I know on our schedule, and as you've referred to already, there are a number of meetings scheduled this week, but by far and away, not an opportunity to meet with every employee on campus. Included in those meetings is one meeting with students. Will there be additional meetings set up to meet with students?
I can take that question. And I appreciate that someone had stated that it, it is difficult to meet with everyone that we would like to in the course of a week. And if we're not meeting with you, or if you're listening remotely and we haven't had a chance to schedule time with you, I do encourage you to share your ideas either with the people that you work with who are being interviewed or with us online, because that is, we will read every single comment that comes in online and we'll respond to that. And as far as the meetings with the students go, we've actually been taking a very hard look over the past couple of weeks at how we can best connect with students and have a chance to get to know students at each of the universities and interact with them. So University of Iowa last week, for example, we met with several students, including the heads of the student government for both undergraduate and graduate governments. And that's something that we'll continue to work with the board this week. If we don't get a chance to meet with as many people as we'd like this week, as far as students go, I guarantee you there'll be a chance in the near future to be able to do that.
Great, thank you. Bruce, this is, is one for you. You've already talked a little bit about the performance-based funding model that's under consideration and being worked on. Since UNI educates a large population of in-state Iowans, will Deloitte Consulting be examining the discrepancies in funding for UNI versus the other two institutions?
Yeah, and actually, that's not within the purview of, of Deloitte to do that. What, what we established last fall was a committee chaired by David Miles, we call the Performance Funding Committee, that's charged is to look at both historical funding of the three universities and the present funding on how regent dollars are distributed. So that, that committee has, in addition to David Miles, Katie Mahullen is the regent on the committee, as well as UNI has Mark Omen representing them on the committee, Iowa State Kara Hayden, and the University of Iowa Len Hadley. And that committee has been doing work, looking at a variety of performance funding across the nation, some of which has state money following in-state students, because historically that's how our funding was distributed. I think that, that it's important that a component of their recommendation be, be that, and I would encourage you to continue to support that from the University of Northern Iowa's perspective. Once that recommendation is made, the committee's plan is to have that recommendation completed in early May. That recommendation will be public, their meetings are public going on right now, they have another meeting, I think, on the 15th or 16th of April. And then that'll be public the first week in May, we will vote on it at our Regents' meeting, either accepting it or changing it. And then that recommendation will go to the legislature that will have to vote on it next year. And so I think the governor was here last Friday and talked a little bit about it, we're making sure we keep all the leaders informed about the committee, the thoughts, the national programs that are going on. But again, that, that hadn't been looked at in over 70 years. And the universities have changed pretty dramatically with that, in particular, UNI's percentage growth of in-state students. UNI is at 92% in-state, Iowa State is at 66% in-state, with a large in-state student population, and the University of Iowa is about 50/50 with that. So we think it's important that we make all, sure all three universities are funded, and I think you'll see a result and a reflection of us trying to do that.
Great. Okay, so this is a question that I think any of you could answer. How are you going to consider UNI's unique mission in determining recommendations for efficiency?
Sure, I can start, and then others can feel free to jump in. As, as we meet with individuals and groups this week, understanding the mission and understanding how that mission is applied and tracked and evaluated is an important part of the discussions that we're having. For example, on the academic side, as we meet with faculty and as we meet with faculty, senate representatives, that's part of the dialogue that we have throughout those conversations is understanding how the current programs support and fit the mission, and understanding how the university is performing against the mission as well, and where there may be challenges and where there, there may be great successes in moving that mission forward. So a lot of what we're doing this week will involve conversations around the mission, and whether it's on the academic or on the administrative side, it all funnels back to understanding how those pieces fit that, fit the mission. Anyone like to add?
Yeah, and I think, just to echo a little bit, I think, you know, it fits in line with what we've been trying to do. It's back to, we ought to recognize that UNI has 92% in-state students. We ought to recognize that it, it doesn't get the benefit of $16,000 a year on a, on a large number of out-of-state students like the other two schools do. We ought to recognize that it's, it's a comprehensive university, not looking just like the other two research institutions. We ought to recognize that while there may be a need for three business schools, the three business schools are different. And in particular, we ought to make sure that in UNI's situation, that the College of Education's the premier one, that the, that the three universities offer and is well-funded to do that. So I think in line with that, it is one of the reasons why we asked for special funding, again, for UNI over the last three years. We'll continue to battle for that legislative request this year. It is also in line with why we need to look at the Reappropriations Performance Committee in terms of the historical and near-term funding changes the regents need to make. And then we need to be efficient in terms of looking, is there ways that we can do this better, as been, been described? And so I think the timing of all three is pretty important with that. The other aspect that we've asked the three presidents to do at all three universities is increase the funding, fundraising from the foundations for scholarships. Because we also know that in particular at UNI, there is a great need for scholarships that, that aren't funded today. So part of attracting and growing the student population is having that availability of dollars in scholarship for those students. So those efforts have been met well and are continued to, to develop. But I think it, it's a variety of things that we can do as regents to make, make the system better that we're working hard on to do.
Great, thank you. Rick in Virginia, is there a place that UNI employees can go and see some of the other colleges or universities that you've worked with? Or is that information you're able to share now?
Just to interrupt a little bit, Rick, before you answer that, the list of colleges and universities that you worked with, I believe is on the board's side, because it's part of your application process that we went through on, on all the universities you've worked with historically, so the public can go and find that and look at that, but, go ahead.
I, I think that's a good source. I think that describes schools that we've worked with and the variety of universities and colleges that we've, colleges that we've served throughout the US, so I think that would be the best spot.
And that's an excellent point. I know we have a link on our page to the RFP document, but we can try to facilitate that process as well through our efficiency page as well. So, excellent point, thank you. Will there be any students on any internal committees?
The, the, the reason that we had Deloitte and the, our committee sent them right to the campuses was to involve the campuses and over 200 people they met with, and we'll be meeting with, I think the process is a good one, it's gonna, it's going to bring in a broad spectrum of the folks that are in this room and the leadership teams at the universities. And in a process as big as this, we, we simply don't, at every university, aren't gonna have time to meet every person at every university. Bruce gave you the size of our universities and the over, overreaching numbers, but as, as chairman of the committee, it's my belief that, that they're taking a broad spectrum and an approach that, that's gonna involve a whole lot of people.
And what I, what I would also say, and I think, I think the students know this from both the Regents' breakfasts that they attend, is that the plan is to make sure that we have meetings on campus and both from regent leadership, the committee, and Deloitte, ongoing with students on recommendations. And we'll do that.
And I tell the student leaders that I'm looking at right over here, I had a call from Iowa State University saying, you know, a fair number of our leadership team couldn't be there for that 10 o'clock meeting that you had last week, we would like to have more discussion at Iowa State. And I said, I said, I do have a day job, but anytime that you need me to run down the highway 45 miles and come to a luncheon with student leaders, and frankly, you can fill the whole Memorial Union if you want to, and I'll sit in front of a group and talk to them about this project at any given time, and I'm absolutely certain Regent Rested will also.
Larry always points out, I'm in-between day jobs, so I'll try.
Unfortunately, and you'll find this when you get out in your careers, your partners may not pay you for just being out on your public service job, but it, but it's a great reward, so what you're doing, I thank you for doing, and I can commit to you whenever you want, if you want such a meeting on this campus, I'll be up here.
Great. This is a question that's pretty specific and also calls into, calls to attention the differences in the sizes of the schools. Will cash reserves at each university be taken into consideration when making recommendations?
My understanding is that is part of the other project on re-allocation or appropriation, so I'll turn it to President Rested.
Yeah, and I think the simple answer, as those questions have been asked, this, this will help clarify that for us as regents. So we're, we're looking forward to that as both part of this and the other process.
Okay, so we have a little bit less than five minutes left, so I have another fairly specific question for Rick and Virginia. If you could provide some suggestions on how you go about making the hiring process more efficient? We have some searches on campus that might take a couple of months and others that seem to complete in about five days. So are there recommendations or best practices that you've seen that could be beneficial?
So, we don't know how you do it here today yet, and there's lots of different possible solutions. And for example, very often, if you look at the days contributed to the cycle time of hiring someone, that it's the people outside of HR that are the biggest addition of the time to the process, not to the HR department itself. It's kind of an interesting finding that you can, you'll often see. But we don't know what it is gonna be here. There's other differences here that exist by the type of position that you're pursuing. Professional positions take longer, particularly if you have, and then if you have faculty involvement in the process, that's, that's a totally different process and, and very collaborative and takes, takes additional time. So the comparison that's being cited in the question may or may not be a fair one, just to begin with, because it could be two different kinds of positions, and it wouldn't be fair to expect them to be of similar timing if they are significantly different. In addition, there's other technology and other aspects of having candidates identified in advance of need. There's other aspects related to technology components that can identify needs for future hires, so there's an advanced awareness within HR to go get the recruiting machinery going. There are a lot of, there's, could be policy issues about what is required to place a position, you know, and to decide to fill a position. There, there could be a whole slew of different aspects that play in this, so hopefully it gives you a sense of the kinds of things we look at.
Great, thank you very much. We are out of time. If I didn't get to your question, as President Rude mentioned in his introductory remarks, we will be going through and getting those questions answered, we'll be posting all the questions and answers to our efficiency webpage at some time. I don't have an exact timeline for that, because of course, we need to be able to get the questions to the consultants or to the regents so they can be answered. If anybody has a question that we were not able to get their cards, let either Scott or I know, and we'll be glad to pick it up, and don't hesitate to submit any future questions on the online site going forward.
Kelly, if I could make one closing comment. When I was here on student government, I was Chief of Staff for Student Government here, this was a green space right above our heads. There probably are a few people here that can remember that with a big tree that created a controversy. And we had set-ins and a question, question was, are we going to build a Mocker reunion, union, reunion, Mocker Union right here and destroy the green space? That, that was the thing that was decided. Well, I'm here much later to know and tell you that change is not necessarily a bad thing. Change is okay, let's have a great dialogue. I have, I have told our committee, we can throw anything up against the wall, some of it'll stick, some of it won't stick. We will have agreements and disagreements within our committee, and we did have when we were selecting our consultants. And we know that when we have an open dialogue and, and open dialogue in this stage, we will have disagreements, because that's the intellectual basis of the group that's out here. Let's have those dialogues, let's have them in a civil manner, and then let's say 20 years from now, when these students come back here, whatever it is, that the change that happened at the University of Northern Iowa, you all participated in, and you can come back like McKibben did many years later and be in a place that used to be grass above him, and say, this is a better university for what you did. So thank you, thank you all so much. So thank you, thank you all so much for coming today.
Thank you.